Yeah.
What, what was he boys saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just things that show.
Okay.
Hey, man.
Yes, man.
It is.
I think Paul Rainey, but we saw it out there was.
I don't know, maybe it is.
So here she was.
The US time.
Yeah, she moved here for like the last four months. I just.
You just.
For a while. I got the whole list.
We are, I've got stuff.
Yeah.
I have a job on the video.
It's good.
Yeah.
Josh, you know, all the quick spots. Like, look, this spot here, there's typically no cops, so you can ask for a whole set. Don't generally sit here.
Do that. I did notice that.
Oh.
I did.
Well, guys.
So I'll go night shift.
But.
Long.
Happily, really pretty.
Right on.
Yeah.
We were up there last. We're up there last week.
Especially when that one.
The same shirt was like, yep, same day.
Yeah.
Dear.
You.
Are you talking?
As Dr. Johnson idiot saw your post. I'm getting this whole thing. I'm excited.
Okay.
By the way, by the way. Now I pull it up inside, so.
Yeah.
It's been all that long. I'll see you tomorrow.
I wasn't.
Bucks.
Your best.
Bucks.
Yeah.
So everybody put in that section.
Okay.
Gene.
So.
One day.
One day. Now you moved on.
Um, you were. Come, come, because I think he said it just. Patient to give on or talk to. Over forty-four.
Average. Yeah, I mean, you have it on. Because.
Yeah, I just grew up here.
You mean that's.
I like. This.
No.
I like. Good to meet you. Yeah, it should be. I was looking at the site.
Never met him before, but his name's.
That's a good guy.
Good guys. Good guy.
Have any or.
Sure.
Unless you need your pad.
No, I guess. Remove something please. Need to do your light.
It's pretty.
You go here.
He's coming eighty.
And then we didn't.
They're always. Rebound.
They stayed on.
Way over the east.
There's.
Nice.
We didn't even know what the college was.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Safe. I was gonna say, nice day to see for your.
Oh. Uh, well. It's a bond, it's sixty percent. Um, and if it's love, you could plus one fifty percent. They, there's.
So.
Justice or exonerational type of part, there's actually two exist. They'll tax. We know.
Like on toothed it or something.
It was.
Because it would handle over. Well, nasty. August, Tuesday, the twenty-first.
I'll see you. This is the one that's gonna raise our taxes.
This is.
Hey, are you doing great fact?
I'm not even sixty dollars.
Just seven o'clock. Be sure.
Thank you. With the time. You know, my video. Cause he. See you in your bones. Police station.
We've got five houses.
Well, that was. Fifteen years. Yeah.
Seven minutes.
It wasn't like. People already know they're asking. No, but we're up. Chair. You won't need cushion chairs. This place is gonna be your chair. For sure. We're gonna bump down. That'll be good. My. In a lot. If I got it. If they find out. I do.
I know. Ninety-one.
Yes, can I know that you're speaking next Tuesday, seven o'clock.
Thanks.
Next Tuesday, seven o'clock.
They're gonna charge me to get here for like a whole year. Too easy.
You gotta come.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have all of the. Name. Faces. Yeah.
We're all getting.
Things he was like.
Yeah.
We have. Except the young people.
Just.
Well, children. So.
But.
I sleep. Ready. Weather come on happy. Is there a reason why it's facing that way?
It's because I can't. Right class.
Are there a free donation?
Uh, there will be a lot of those. Yeah. Power. It's good.
So I didn't count. Yes. And just.
East. The pants is straight.
Do.
Head south. There's a. One.
Is that your. Any of these. The super.
I remember. Thinking makes Tuesday test her.
Will you be coming?
Oh, they changed it. Yeah, I hope.
I don't.
I just. You still here?
You see.
Now they moved it up there.
You haven't seen.
Yes. Glad you're.
Yeah, I. Chief Rhodes, the chief of police for the city of Rexburg, and I appreciate all of you for being here. We. Just to kind of introduce what we've been working on, we've, we've been working on. His plans for a PlayStation for years and years and years. We've gone through a, a big process of trying to figure out the best way. Be able to manage, um, and to be able to, to grow in the city as the city continues to, to gain more population and more. Growth, more residential. Um, I don't know our exact timeframe over, over a year ago, we started putting together. A steering committee, um. Starting to select, um, the CMDC architects, going through the whole process. It's been a big learning. Experience for me to, to learn the process and following all the. The law, li- legislation, the laws that, that go into it. And so. Um, real quick, I just wanna introduce our steering committee. So the steering committee. Was, was a big group that had started. Basically, just within the city. Matt Nelson, who's the mayor, city council. Police department, and then we, we followed a selection process, um, and that selected the CMGC. And our architects, and so. Within that committee, um, as members of. The city council, the police department, and then those organizations. So. If you're part of that steering committee, if you wouldn't mind stepping up here real quick, um, tell us if you can introduce yourself. Who you're with, um, and then what your, your role has been in this process. Um, you think. Just a real quick second. Matt, we'll start with you, or you can just stay where you're at, actually.
Oh, okay. Uh, so my name's Matt Nielsen. I'm the chief finance officer for the city. Um, and all, my role came in obviously because of my role, but that. It also came in because the city council came to us several years ago. And said, you know, how, how can we look at. Doing a new police facility, whether that was doing a remodel, doing an addition, getting it. Or buying or constructing a new one. And so as a city, we actually started putting aside money. Um, several years ago, and. To do this project, you know, all in, we've been able to save up about close, not quite three million dollars. With the bulk of that coming from general fund money, which is. The source of general fund is like sales tax, property tax. Those kind of things. And then we looked at several options. We said, well, can we even do what's called a lease purchase in Idaho? And unfortunately, you know, as we looked at the cost to build a new facility that would service into the future for several decades plus. Um, that option was not. It wouldn't work for us because our, our, our annual payment would have been several million dollars per year. It was a lot more than we could afford to do each year. So then we, that's when we did what Josh said, and we brought on some experts that could give us, uh. Some more details and, uh. And then we started looking into this bond option. So. So anyway, that's my role. And as we get into the Q and A, if you have finance questions, come, come chat with me. I'd be happy to help you.
I call and Eric send the city councilman. I was on a steering committee one because of being a councilman, also because I was in law enforcement here for thirty years. And we did start this back clear back my lieutenant for the PD. Probably four or five years before I retired, we started talking about what, what do we do with girls? Cause we were, we're maxed out. And we've done a lot to that building over there, trying to facilitate. To keep it running while I was there. And then. When I came out of city council, when they asked for people to be on steering committee, I thought with my expertise of being an officer. And also, uh, been there for that many years, I could. Give my input and see what we could do to, to. Look at a new police department. So.
That's right.
We get the rest of you just come up real quick so everybody doesn't have to turn back around. So Justin, if you guys can just step up real quick and just introduce what your. Over here. Yeah, that's, that's a little bit, just so they're not having.
If you, actually, if you go in the front. Then you're on the camera. I probably should have done it too, so.
Yeah, we should have done this.
I'm Justin Beard. I'm with City Rexburg Public Works Department. I'm the assistant public works director, and I'm just on the steering committee to help. Perspective of. Public works from the city.
Uh, my name is Brian Coleman. I'm a principal with Hummel Architects. Uh, the city brought us on as kind of their expert to help guide them through this process. Um, we, if you don't know Hummel Architects, we've been around for a couple of years. Next year will be our hundred and thirtieth anniversary in Idaho. Um, we have an office in Boise, and we also have an office in Idaho Falls. And so. We're really here, the local, to kind of help guide the process, but we also know that public safety and police kind of have an expertise. That's where Bill comes in. He's our expert. Um, he's got over twenty-eight years of experience in law enforcement. And a great expert in helping these guys move us forward as well.
Great. Yeah, I'm Bill Alderhead. I'm a partner at K and B Architects. Um, and as Brian, it, I've, uh, spent my entire career focused on justice. Uh, facilities, public safety, lawn for facilities, uh, designing around the Western United States. So. Um, and this is like our seventh project. Uh, together between Hummel and K and B Architects as a consultant to, to Hummel. So glad to be part of the project.
So my name's Hiram Pitt. I'm with the Headwaters Construction Company. And we are a general contractor. Where our headquarters is here in Rexburg. And I live here in Rexburg. Um, I've got Derek Burke here with me as well. He's, he lives here in Rexburg, but we, we've got brought in, um. The city followed a, a, a process to, to select the contractor to get them on board, uh, early in the process so that we could help. Um, provide kind of the estimating and some support on constructability and things like that as we've gone through this process. So. Um, we also, uh, Rich Tyler here, he'll stand. So again, these, these facilities are very specialized and they're very important. Um, they have a lot of requirements of, of things that, you know, aren't in every facility. And so, uh. Ridge is with Core, and we brought them as part of our team. Um, they have a ton of experience and, and Rich has a ton of experience with, uh, public safety facilities on the construction side. So. Go ahead.
Uh, twenty-five years in public safety before I retired and changed careers into another career on the construction side like Bill. Focusing on our public safety communities. Um, as you know, or may not know, our public safety individuals who work and serve your community. Nationally, their lifespan is shorter than the general population because of the things we experience and what we're exposed to throughout our career. The one place we have a hundred percent control over is our facilities. So from the construction side, my goal is to ensure your officers that serve you and your communities with this facility. It extends their lifespan, not continue to shorten their lifespan as we've seen nationally.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you all.
Of the mayor's here.
Oh.
Gary Merrill, I just showed up to clean the toilets.
Mary's been a, a major part of the steering team as well, and we appreciate everybody. We, we meet frequently. Um, we've, we've done. Our due diligence, trying to figure out the best way. To, to create a facility that will serve us. Now, but in twenty, thirty years into the future, so we have room to grow as the city continues to grow. So we're not. Back in these shoes ten years from now or five years from now, but. Put a design that'll help us grow and the ability to, to grow into it. There, there's a lot that's gone into it. Um, I know there's a lot of specific questions, so we can get into that in a little bit. Time constraints, uh, city council. Starts right after this, and so I'm gonna give Brian some time to just explain a little bit about. Little more of their process and the design, and then we'll have more questions after. And then you can catch us if we don't get all the questions answered. So.
I think Matt's gonna pull up the booklet where we produce, and this is essentially the, the final document that we did through this whole process, and. This is not something that was created overnight. Um, like everyone said, that, you know, this is a process that's been going on for some time, and there's been a lot of effort, due diligence going into producing this. Um, and basically, we'll, we'll give you kind of an overview of what our process was and how we kind of got where some of the stuff that you're seeing today and how, what, how. We got the numbers of what you guys will be voting for in November, um, and then we can kind of open it up for questions and go from there. But overall, the, the, the idea was, is we came in and we started evaluating the existing conditions and facilities of the existing police department. You know, the size of the facility or department. You know, the size of the facility or department has grown. The apartment has not, was not a purpose-built building. It was a retrofit with a T-ow. And it wasn't up to modern standards. They're dealing with a lot of things that would not meet current police standards today. And it had no room for growth. And if you haven't had a chance to go over to the department, I believe next Tuesday, the 28th, they're opening up the department again, and you can kind of get a tour through the facility and kind of understand some of the conditions that they're working in. But part of the process is, is really understanding the requirements and size and square footages that they need. So that's where Bill's expertise really jumped in. And we came up with a space program where we started really analyzing the individual spaces and what those individuals need.
You bet, Brian. Again, space programming and planning really starts with people and the individuals. So that was really a, a big part of where we started was looking at the current staffing that the police department has, as well as kind of planning for future growth. So we looked at immediate needs as well as looking at 20 to 30 years. What is the community growing to? What would the staffing of the PD actually look like to grow to? Based off of that, then we're able to analyze and determine really what the spaces needed to be able to have those individuals perform their function within the police department and within the community. So this is essentially a space list. So those conversations ultimately into an Excel spreadsheet and in tabular form, really looking at all the different departments and the spaces. And we can get into a lot more detail as you'd like, but like administration area is really that public entry piece. That's where the, the community room would be located. Again, we're trying to maximize return on investment. So the community room is also going to be acting as a training space for the police department. We're looking at all the command staff offices are within the admin suite. In the detectives' area, that's where you'd expect that. There's some war rooms or some major case spaces. There's their offices located within that as well as storage for all their equipment within the detectives' division. Patrol, the same way. That's their briefing room, report writing spaces, storage for all their equipment within the spaces, training. That's where their mat room that for defensive tactic, defensive tactics is, is located as well as some support staff to be able to support their training processes, records. Some more offices as well as all the, the files and the records are stored there. And for community interaction as well for records requests. Holding, that's a vehicle salute vestibule where officers are able to bring someone in that's in custody into the facility as well as, you know, inflixelizer room, some interview rooms are located within that space as well. Evidence is where evidence is processed. That's where evidence tech is able to then take the evidence that's brought in from the officers and processing that and then storing it. And being all those requirements. And then the shared building resources, there's a lot of things that kind of fall into that that all the different departments or the, the units end up using. So that'd be locker room spaces. That would be some additional conference room spaces located within that. The SWAT needs a, a ready room to essentially be able to coalesce before they move out on an incident. So that space is located within there. The staff break room. So all the different area of staff are able to use one break room. So we're not having multiple break areas throughout the facility. All those type of things ultimately build the space program.
Once we built this, this space program after many department meetings, understanding their special needs, we handed this over to our friend over at Headwater, and we started analyzing what these spaces would cost and what the overall building would cost based on square footage. And so, Hyrum, maybe I'll give a quick overview of how we came up with the square footage costs?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'll stand up here. So, you know, our job really is to, you know, they call it estimating or, or reason. And so once the, this kind of program was put together, then we went about trying to figure out, okay, without knowing all the details, what, what could something of this size and this complexity and to the codes that are, are required for this type of building, what's that going to cost? And so, you know, we took some historical data, both from projects that we've been involved with, as well as other similar facilities, public safety facility. And we're able to, to come up with a, a kind of a budget for this. Now, just to kind of give you one step beyond, so if this bond were to pass and it was to move forward, the design is going to continue, obviously. And then at some point, as part of the, the, the process, Headwaters would bid out this project to all the subcontractors. And, and so those subcontractors would bid on the project. And we would open those bids in a public meeting where everyone's available to, to be a part of that, the owner, architect, everyone's there. We open those in front. And so it's really an open, transparent, competitive process to get the best cost on this project. But ultimately, as the, at this stage, what we're trying to do is make some assumptions so that on that day, when we bid it out, when we have full detail and we get those subcontractor bids in, we want to make sure that those bids come in and, and they're not above where the budget is, right? And so that, that's the, that's the dance we play as the, the contractor. And we feel really good about the numbers that we came to, again, based on historical data, current data, reaching out to subcontractors that we work with, trying to test the market on, on different materials and seeing where that market is going. And especially for some of the specific requirements for a public safety facility. So that's kind of how we, we came about to, to get to these numbers. And again, at some point, this project would then be bid out to subcontractors that are licensed to do this, this work that we would then manage. So that's kind of the process. And if there's more questions later, we can get into it.
Yeah. One thing I wanted to point out is we look at the per square foot cost. It might be a little higher than what you'd expect for like a typical office building. This isn't a typical office building. This is a purpose-built police facility. That's an essential facility that falls under IMBC International Building Code, Essential Building Code. So Bill, you want to touch on a little bit about what falls under that essential building piece?
Yeah. So per the building code, anything that's part of either first responders or a facility like law enforcement, you want to have a built-in level of resiliency. So if there happens to be, you know, a catastrophic event, you know, earthquake, flooding, anything major like that, that those type of facilities, whether it's a hospital, whether it's a law enforcement facility, a police facility, that those buildings are able to withstand those events to make sure that they are continuing to provide those services to the community. So that just means there's a level of redundancy, resiliency that's built in from the electrical as well as structural side of things, communications, systems that are built into those facilities. So that does, and heighten a level of, of cost to those facilities. As well as just what you would expect, you know, there's durability of systems that are incorporated into the space as well as the amount of technology that goes into a modern police facility. It's just more than what you'd expect within a, and you'd see within a typical office building or school or other public facility like that.
Great. The next piece we started looking at was some site location. And so throughout this whole process and all these meetings, Matt, was a big part of it. We started evaluating different properties throughout the community. And it was based on the size of the property. It was based on the size with the location of the property, response time of the property. And essentially, we came to this piece of property off Pioneer Road, and it kind of fit the bill. It was about the size we needed. It was in a good central location. And it just worked out that the price worked for the city. And this is where we essentially decided to move forward with the site planning, the site location. And so what we're looking at here today might look like a floor plan, but it isn't by all means. If you remember that program piece that Bill was talking about earlier, we're really just looking at square footages of individual departments. And so this is what we would call a bubble diagram. We're really kind of start just looking really high level context view of where particular departments might land in an individual building. As Bill touched on earlier about that essential building or component piece, you'll see that there's a separate building in the back and it houses some SWAT, some storage. And what that stuff is essentially non-essential police features, right? So we can build that building for less per square foot than we can build the main building. And so that was kind of our cost savings piece of any piece that didn't need to be essential, that was still part of the police department. We pushed it out of the more expensive square footage. And so that's kind of why we had that second building on the back. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add to maybe about this diagram, about how things landed?
Yeah. The, which, which we note there at the bottom of the slide here is, you know, that darker gray space, that's really planning for the future. And it's not just, as you can see, it's, it's throughout the facility because each different department is going to grow at a different rate. We want to make sure that the, these different spaces, which these would be just shell spaces, the, the term we end up calling it. So it's unfinished spaces are there when the department needs to be able to grow into them. As you can see, they're, they're located in between the different departments. So as the department grows, they can grow into it. If in the future, their, the processes change, their needs change, then we can reallocate those spaces to other needs and uses as well. But also we wanted to be able to prove out as far, make sure that the site is going to be able to work. So we wanted to be able to lay it out, really look at circulation, obviously, making sure that we have multiple means of egress and ingress from the site. Make sure there's plenty of room for public access and parking as well as staff parking. And then as you can kind of see here, that the site was large enough to be able to support, you know, over an acre of future growth or future needs, whether it's the, the police department or any other city agency that might need some additional space for facilities that's available for the future as well.
Bill, I was just going to add to that. So as part of this early programming process and, you know, we, we took kind of a plan without the shell space, priced that. We priced a, a version where we, we had the shell space in. And we also priced a version where it was built out completely so that basically on day one, you have every single space completely finished. And, and I think it's, it's kind of, we always use like the, the unfinished basement example, like people love, as a young family, you buy a house with an unfinished basement because as your family grows, you can, you can build out and you're getting a great bang for your buck because you've already got the structure, the roof, you know, it's already there. So when we, when we laid out those different options and priced those different options, you know, the city and, and those involved felt like that was getting kind of that best bang for your buck where as you continue to grow, the city wouldn't have to go back and ask the city members to, to kind of put that bill, right?
Yeah. And I, and I can, let me turn this on.
I can add a little to that. So in the bottom, it talks about impact fees. And so the thought is on that gray shell or that gray area that impact fees would pay for that. And when we say impact fees, those are fees paid by new growth. And so as we grow over the next five to 20 years, impact fees bring in revenue and that money can be used to finish out that space so that we're not coming back to you again and saying, hey, we need to pass another bond to finish that space.
Great. So then the last piece of this is just more informational. A lot of this stuff is on, all of this stuff is on the city's website. We encourage you to go onto the city's website, review this information. And as you can see, there's also information about how and when as well.
We appreciate it. And actually, if you guys just want to stay up, because we might have to answer some of these questions. So, yeah, if you have any questions, I think we have fifteen, twenty minutes until.
Yeah, we got a little.
Yes. I do, and I'd appreciate it if you give me just a moment. It won't take a long time. But I think this is important. When you say police force is absolutely necessary, I'm a citizen, old guy now, been here 47 years. Only police experience I had was in basic training, five months as an NP. Not much. But, so I'm for the police force. I looked at the picture and I say, we probably need half as many as we've got. So you guys are always pushing, pushing, pushing. Now, please don't make me sit down because I want to say a couple of things that have happened in the 47 years that I've been here. The mayor probably is a little uncomfortable with me here. But it'll probably cost me over 15 years. I guess I won't live that long, about $2,500 from what I can get from two people in the city. You know, about a hundred and fifty, sixty dollars a year, you know, more tax. So it's going to cost more. But, so I think it's reasonable to have a peace force. I, I, I have not personally had the police force do anything positive for me personally since I've been here for 47 years. I think generally they have, so I'm for that. Let me give you some reasons really quick. A few here. Please steal. Okay, way back when I had nine children. My boy was young, up on the bench working, moving pipe. He found, he found a canoe and a rifle up there hidden. And I said, what the deal? And he said, I says, report to the police. He reports it to the police. We could never find out what happened to that. I don't know if you guys stole it, the police people, or whether it got back to the people, but I could never find out. You never would give an answer. I said to him, next time you find something stolen, we'll, we'll find a way to put it in the paper and find out. It'll lead to be the thief that'll answer that or the one that owns it. They're the only, the ones that'll be able to identify it. But the police, you can't count on them. Second thing, you had an auction. This is way back. You had, I came here in 78. You had an auction at the fire department. And there was all these kinds of things that have been picked up, whichever you guys do all over. And there was a nice gas can on the table. I went in early, looked around and says, I'm going to vote, I'm going to, I'm going to auction, I'm going to try to get that by auctioning. And I was waiting for the auction to start. Two policemen come in. They come in, they look around like I did. They'll see that gas can. They pick it up, walk out the back of the, of the fire department, open their trunk of their car and put it in there. I followed them out. I says, you're stealing that. They looked at me and said, what are you, you causing trouble? Went back in, police chief was there. I think it must have been Cyper. I don't know who the names were then, maybe Cyper. And went up and they went up and said, this guy's causing trouble. And the police chief says, you causing trouble? I got three policemen against me, so I walk out. So they stole it. Okay. That's the police. Police dishonest. My boy one time was a teenager. He was taking a girl home. He was down there at Porter Park with the light. That's where, where Detroit Book is. That was a Circle K. He waited two, that light did not work. It was broken at the time. I know that, others knew that. It wouldn't work unless somebody came the other way. It would never trigger. So he's sitting there in the car with his girlfriend. I'm sure he enjoyed that. But he said, I went through two songs. That's a teenager's language. Finally, he turned left and went south. Police came out of Circle K, gave him a ticket for going through it. Now, the light did not work. I know that. Okay. I went, I supported him at the court. Judge Moss was in there. He said, I'll dismiss this case. The policeman says, no, I won't dismiss it. So the judge, so the judge says, see me next week. I talked to him next week. He said, dismiss it. So that same policeman, I saw him come out of Kmart, the old Kmart store. And so I followed him away. Rolled through the stop sign, didn't signal once, six times, dishonest. Okay? So that same policeman broke the law seven times at that time. Harassment, quite late at night. I was coming out of the courthouse. And it was dark, but I was coming out of the main area and I heard this girl was giggling and then a guy talking and I, I look in there and there's a policeman in there and he says to those two teenage girls about 15 or 16, I'm going to have to make a full body search on you girls. And then the girls giggle, you know. I call that a hypocrite. I call that harassment. Okay. You've had a lot in the, in the city for years, ever since I've been here. And my teenagers would do it sometimes. They'd come down the way I came on the west side of the road on Elm Street. And they'd park on the left side. They'd get tickets. Okay. They get a ticket. You know, park the wrong way. You enforced that for a number of years. I don't know if you still do. The irony is, the irony is that I had a policeman live across the street from me for five and a half years. He parked the wrong way 90% of the time, and I'm not being, I'm not exaggerating that, maybe more than that. He would park the wrong way because he'd come up from the courthouse area and he'd park on that east side of the road the wrong way. He never got a ticket once. And plus he had a great big tool trailer that, you know, you put your forerunners in and stuff like that, four wheelers. And it, it would sit out there, take up half the road, you know, month after month. So hypocrite, yes. And then I had a final reunion at Smith Park. We signed it up. We're down there with the family, people coming from all over. And I was parked on the east side of the road of Smith Park. Fire department comes in, I'm parked in there, they put cones up there to block it out, bring their truck in, put their hose to the fire department, shoot the water out and that's fine. You know, shoot the water out, I guess they're trying to clean it up or what they're trying to do. No problem. But then I went up to get ice cream at my home, not very far away, with my nephew, who's from out of state. And I go up and get the ice cream and come back. I had to go around the cones. The fire department's gone. Cones are still in the road. I go up, get it, come back, and I come back to park the same place I was before, went around the cones. I get the blue light, guy comes out strutting out like this, you know, dark glasses on, he says, that's an eighty three dollar fine. And and I said, there's nobody here. Fire department forgot to pick it up. Go give them a fine, not me. I haven't done anything wrong. And he strutted around, strutted around. Finally, I called the police chief in, I think it was an Archibald or somebody then, I don't know. And he called back. I told him what time, I don't know who it was. He called, he called me back later. I told him the time and the place. And he said, he laughed and he says, that's your neighbor. So, okay.
We're running out of time.
I know you are, but that's important, Merrill, Merrill, President. Let me just finish two things.
You have a question right now.
I'm just telling you the reasons why I don't want, why I will not vote for it.
Okay.
Harassment, do you understand that?
Okay, okay, I'm through. I've got some, I've got some volunteer work to go do right now. You know what, I'm happy to have you come in and talk to me tomorrow.
I'd be happy to talk.
About all your complaints.
Last time you told me that was a cause of the trouble and the engineer was really.
Sometimes you are, but go ahead and sit down.
I'd be happy to talk to you too anytime about the police issues. So you have another question?
Yeah, so two questions. First one, you talked about the impact fees and wanted you to explain how is that assessed? You were saying it's a future growth. And then the other question I had was, had it to do with the new facility being in code? Because you were saying right now, this current facility is not in code. So I'm wondering if you could explain what would we gain as far as the police force in being in code? I don't know what that, what we would gain by having a new facility. So those questions.
Impact fees real quick. Impact fee, so impact fees, there, we actually have to go out and do a separate study for that. And impact fees in, we collect for police, fire, trains, parks. And in this case, this, we're just talking about police impact fees. And so, for example, if a new apartment complex came in and say they had fifty units, we go through that study and we'll look at call data or police calls to go out to apartments. And then we go through a process to establish a fee that they would pay. And the whole gist of it is, as people move in and the city grows, they're causing an impact on your service level, right? For example.
Is it a one-time supplemental tax? Is it what? Is it a one-time supplemental tax?
It's a one-time tax when they develop.
Gotcha.
That help?
When they what?
When they develop.
When they, new development, yeah.
New businesses, new apartments.
Yeah, and I probably should say development impact fee, that's, that's really what it is. I think you have one more question, right?
The codes?
Yeah.
I guess the benefit to the community of having a facility that's actually designed to code would just, again, that that existing building was not designed to current seismic and lateral and essential facility code. So the potential is that if there is some type of event that would occur, that facility would then not be functional for a period until it's either repaired or ultimately replaced. So that would affect, you know, call for service, that would affect efficiency and safety within the community. So that's really the benefit of having, you know, any facility, no matter what, is designed to code. Thank you.
My question is about the choice of location. So I'm a homeowner on Pioneer Road. And my initial idea is that building a police station on Pioneer Road is going to increase traffic. It's going to increase noise and decrease property values for the residents in that area. My question is, why did you choose a location as in a residential area, as surrounded by houses? I mean, you mentioned how it gives you access to the freeway, but that access is passing through a residential area. Could you speak more to maybe other locations that you've considered that aren't residential areas?
So most of the, most of the locations we looked at in some form are connected to a residential. Even downtown, we have a lot of, I know it's not so residential, but they do have apartments right downtown. Anywhere we go, there's going to be, there's going to be residents that live in these areas and they're. Our, our focus, we looked at locations pretty much in every aspect of the city, north side, south side. One reason we did pick it was an easy, we we looked at some on Airport Road even. There's only one access in, landlocked, so if something happens, if a damage happens, we don't have a way to get out of there. Pioneer Road, it allows different accesses to the highway. As far as increased traffic, I don't know that it necessarily would. If.
How could it not under adding something, right?
And one of the, one of the arguments, if if we don't go there, there most likely an apartment complex would go there with four or five hundred beds like the other complexes. And then you'll have that many more cars every single day passing through. As far as the noise, anytime we go through any area where, if it's two, three in the morning, most time we're not picking our sirens on as we're leaving the police station. Usually it's once we get to intersections, we're creating that, that awareness as we approach high-risk areas. As we leave a station, we don't have to kick our lights on, right? Most cases we're not, unless it's an exigent circumstance. There's different requirements for, you know, the fire department, they run the lights and sirens and everything. And so that's usually what people are hearing is the ambulance or the fire department. We're only running lights and sirens if it's major crash or physical violence that's occurring.
But approaching the intersections on the end of Pioneer Road, you would be having your sirens on.
We would, yeah, but we would be.
Which is where there are houses on the ends of Pioneer.
Anywhere you're gonna, if we're going through those intersections on Main Street, we're gonna have our lights and sirens close anyway. We're on, well, Trejo, South Yellowstone, those are major intersections that we would have sirens going.
I asked that same question when we were kind of going through this. And one of the things I just wanted to remind or bring back up was at night, it sounded like that most of the officers are actually on patrol. So they would actually be probably responding to an incident from wherever they were on patrol rather than coming from the facility. So I had asked the same question. That's why I just wanted to bring it up.
And and the third point on property value, I I read online that it can decrease property value by up to ten percent.
It can also increase it.
Do you have studies on that? I haven't seen anything in the in the reports about its impact on property values.
I mean, you read online, it can also increase it depending on.
Is that homeowners?
But have there been studies been done for this location on how it will affect property values and noise levels?
I I haven't done any, we haven't done studies on this specific.
Is that homeowners before the homeowner exemption or after? That we get the hundred and twenty five thousand off of our property, then we're assessed on that.
Correct.
What are you going to do with the old property, even where the police station is now? I remember when that used to be a wood, Boise Cascade, then the Utah Power and Light. I'm giving my age away, but that's been there a long time. And I don't doubt that you don't need to expand. But have you considered other ways of financing this?
We have.
Yeah, we we have. We've looked at several different ways. To answer your question about that, that facility on Main Street, the idea is to sell that off. So to put it back on the factual to to someone commercially that wants to buy that building and use that building on Main Street. But yeah, as far as looking at other options, we looked at remodel options. We looked, as I mentioned, a lease purchase option, which is allowed in the state of Idaho. We also, I mean, ideally, the ideal thing would be we save the money and pay for it in cash, right? But as as we looked at how much we were able to save each year, we just weren't going to get there for thousands of decades and the costs just keep rising.
Did you tell us how much you did save and how many years did it take?
Yeah, so we, and I'll just go back up, I think it sells at right here. A little small, but so right there, we're we're kind of, we're estimating the total expense. And this is, you know, all the pre-bond, we're purchasing the property and then the the build-out, construction of the facility. And that includes everything, fixtures, I mean, that's a finished product, right?
So is that the eighteen million or something?
It's about nineteen point six million.
Oh, okay.
And then we're asking for a bond of sixteen point seven five, which means we're coming up to close to two point nine million that we've been able to save. Majority of that has came from the general fund over the last about four years or so.
So almost a million a year.
Yeah, it probably been more like four hundred from the general fund per year. And then we're gonna keep, of course, continue to save because even if we pass the bond, it's still gonna be another two months to twenty four months before you finish. So we just continue to set aside.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. That's, that's my first comment is thank you very much for your service. We are surrounded by apartments. So I mean, just to address that, we have them being built across from us right now. So yes, the majority of what we see are ambulance and police going to apartment areas. And so, yes, if you have an increase of apartments in your neighborhood, you're going to be seeing more of that going to those near your street, regardless of, right, whether it's police station, I mean, or apartments built near you, they're going to be going to those more frequently in your neighborhood. If this passes, when would we as taxpayers, what would be the first year that we would see that on our property assessment notification? Be that the the next year? Or would it be the one that we're about to be receiving at the end of this year?
Yeah, so we, we wouldn't be able to to really get everything in order to go out and get that bond and that financing until four and twenty sixth.
Okay.
I think the earliest you would see it would be twenty twenty seven.
Okay, okay. And then one other question, which is indirectly to what we're here discussing, that the mayor may address, a good portion, nearly half of our property taxes are for current school bonds. Do you have any information as to when any of those will be done so that it it would be such a dramatic impact to to be paying additional for this, which I'm fully in support for? But are any of those school bonds due to?
Yeah, I don't know that for sure, but I do know they've got a couple of bonds that I think are getting nearing their completion that will be dropping off. Of course, the way we're growing, I don't know when they might be asking for another one too. But they did get some money from the state to help with new construction and maintenance. So I think that pushed, you know, any bond from the school off a ways, so that'll be helpful.
Any, any new bonds? It's gonna push out any new bonds. Correct. Always, is that correct?
Yeah, right, yes.
Would it be the two thousand six, two thousand eight bonds that would be retired, the older bonds?
On the school district?
Yeah, on the school.
It could be, I I don't know, that'd be, that'd be a good question for the school board people.
Are we expecting more bonds for recreation and some of the improvements that we've talked about that sound wonderful? We need an indoor pool in this city.
Yeah, we actually are looking at a possibility of putting a, an auditorium district together. But the nice thing about those is, that's what they call a bed tax. So you and I don't pay it. People who come here to visit pay it. And pretty much whenever you go anywhere else to visit, you you pay it, right? You look at your hotel bill and you go, oh, there's a bed tax on there. We're looking at doing one of those to help with these things that you've talked about, you know, some of those things. But that would just be paid by visitors that are coming to stay in hotels and Airbnbs and things like that.
Good to know.
Our students are timed as as visitors.
Yeah, well, no, not really.
So Mayor, I can, the voter approved bonds that we have passed, the school bonds and other things, that on that, each county's treasurer's office has a list of those bonds. How many, how much is still outstanding and when they find you're paid off? So if we go to the Madison County's website, go to the treasurer's office, there's, there should be a book, it's fresh scene, that has all of all the pre-bonds and.
I was just gonna add some, you know, in the, in, I think the public information, the mayor sitter is when the next, when you're sharing information to support the bonds, I I agree with my neighbor here that that we should have maybe some sort of a schedule to so people know when things are going to be expiring so that, you know. So it helps, I think, people make that that informed decision about where their money's going and how long is it allocated towards X.
Is there anybody here from the Standard Journal, from the newspaper? That should, the newspapers should report that and print that. If there's anybody here, that does look like.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Our last question here, we we more than happy or willing to answer questions after the fact. We can meet out back for a minute while they get city council going.
How much has already been spent? And if the bond doesn't pass, it's plan B.
So that answers a question for the amount.
We bet, yeah. The biggest, the biggest thing is right there, that ninety thousand. And we call that pre-bond programming, architect services. Our CMGC is actually doing all their pre-bond work for free. Ed Waters is providing that for free, and that's why you see that as zero. And then, of course, we've spent the one point three million for the land. Just so you guys are aware, the way that we purchased that ground, the person that we bought it from, if for some reason we didn't pass a bond and we didn't build a police facility there, they actually have first right to buy that back from us. And so they can purchase that ground back from us. And if they don't want to do that, then then we would be able to sell that, that ground. And we really do feel like we got a really good deal on that. You know, if we compared about six other options, that was the, the cheapest in terms of dollars. It was really a great option when you look at the per acre cost that we purchased that for. And we've had a ton of people say, well, why don't you put it in the downtown? And to buy six acres in the downtown, we have a pretty good idea how much that costs. And that's, to be honest, the school district property here is like a seven to eight million dollar purchase for that property. So if you think about that, we would have had to have gone to the voters for an additional probably five to six to seven million dollars, plus the interest on top of that over the fifteen years. And so that was one of the biggest reasons why we kind of had to go out of the downtown was that it was kind of cost prohibitive. We would have had to ask for a tremendous amount more.
We we appreciate everyone for being here. Again, we'll, we'll be doing a tour of the police department next Tuesday at four, from four to six. So you're more than welcome to come walk through the facility. You can answer questions there. There's a few things happening with us in city council tonight, so we we can bounce back and forth. But I'm, I'm more than willing to meet out back. It's a week from Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
Twenty eighth, sorry, not next Tuesday, twenty eighth. We'll post that on our website and we'll send out reminders to through social media. You have questions before then, you can email us. Come to the police department, give me a message, I can get back to you and we can answer any questions that you have. So thanks again for being here. Thanks for steering committee that's, that's helped us through this process. So thank you, and we'll, you next, not next, twenty eighth of October, so thank you. Can we create a little walkway here and we'll, we'll move some of these chairs over this.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Too many people. Yeah.
Water fountain.
Actually, my two sisters live in town here again, or Susan West. Yeah, but it's good to see you. My brother Mike still in Charleston, Carolina. Yeah, but it's good to see you on, uh, live. My brother Mike's still in Charleston, South Carolina. So we gotta go.
Eric, Craig, Chambers. He's not here, so.
Yeah, that's.
This is in taking. Don't remember Cambridge Place on the.
Absolutely.
As an economic question.
You bet, love to. Okay.
Uh, and I think.
So how, what do they mean?
Is, oh, Skipper Scott or, uh, Scott or Aaron, they can tell you when the next one. We just. So it's probably not.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I bet, that'd be great.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your attendance here with us tonight. We'd like to go ahead and ask our, uh, council members to be seated. And, uh, we will start our meeting. We're actually, uh, two minutes overtime, so we better get going. I know, I know you, I know you young folks all go to bed by seven thirty, so we gotta get you done and home, right? Must be a, must be a government assignment due tomorrow. Is that, is that correct? Yeah, okay, well, good. We're glad they have those once in a while, so you come visit us and learn how our, uh, city government works. So we will go ahead and, and, and here's Councilmember Reeser, just like coming into school, always late. No, just kidding, huh? Are these some of your students here?
More than a few, yes.
All right. Okay, well, again, thank you for being here, and, uh, we'd like to start off our meeting this evening. This is the, uh, city council meeting of Rexburg, Idaho, uh, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We'd like to start off with a prayer and a pledge, and we will, I've asked Councilmember Eric Erickson to offer the opening prayer for us, after which our council president, Mike Walker, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Erickson.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered here this evening um, as a group of citizens, uh, concerned about the needs and, and, uh, uh, of, of our, of our great city. We are thankful for the blessings of living in this, uh, in this area. The blessings that have come to us, uh, as we, um, uh, as we join together as a community and face the issues and problems that are before us. We are, uh, thankful for the leaders of our country, our nation, our state and our city, and pray that thou wilt, uh, bless them, to give them guidance, direction, to help, uh, uh, help them to make good, uh, choices and decisions that will benefit us, um, in our, uh, various responsibilities. We pray that thy spirit be with us as we are met this evening, that we will have, um, a good, um, civil discourse, that we will be able to uh, discuss the concerns and needs that are before us and that we'll be able to come to, um, decisions and conclusions which will be for the betterment, betterment of our community. We thank thee again for the blessings of living here in this good, uh, community and do so in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen, thank you.
I, by the name of the nation, stood up by in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a clear and just for all.
All right, thank you very much. We have a few seats up here on the front row if you're looking for a place to sit. You're all the A students anyway, right? So that's a good spot for you. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, the, there's a big crowd out in the, out in the hallway. Uh, we, we did have a five-thirty town hall meeting to discuss any questions about the, uh, police station bond that is coming up. So what that means is, uh, we are asked, we are gonna ask the voters to approve a bond measure where we borrow about sixteen million dollars to build a new police station because our old police station downtown is really old and, uh, getting small. It's not getting smaller, but the police force, of course, is getting bigger and so the, uh, that, there's not enough room there for all of our police officers anymore. So we need, we need a new station and, uh, that is what the, the bond is for. And so we, we had a meeting to a, a, answer questions about that and, uh, to try to help people understand and educate them about the need for that. So if any of you are interested in finding out about that, if you'd like to report on that for your school classes or anything, you can go to the City of Rexburg website. And there's a full, uh, section there about, uh, the police bond, how much it's gonna cost, how much it will cost us individually each as homeowners and, uh, and a lot, a lot of the ideas of what the new one, the new building might look like, how big it might be, where it might be and, and those kind of things. So uh, so having said that, we would like to go ahead for our meeting tonight with the roll call of our council members. So we'll ask our deputy clerk, Mariana Gonzalez, to do that for us, please. Thank you, Dan.
Johnson, here. Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Chambers has asked to be excused this evening. So we'll go ahead, um, at this time, we have some new employees uh, in our, uh, in our city departments, uh, it's particularly in the police department. So we'd like to go ahead at this time with the swearing in ceremony for uh, Joseph Haberly, who is gonna be helping us as a reserve officer. He already works in our fire and emergency services department, so we appreciate him uh, doubling up as a police off, officer, reserve officer. We have a new officer by the name of Lim Horn and another new officer by the name of Riker Davison, uh, who have been hired in our police department. So we'd like to go ahead and turn the time over to our city attorney, Spencer Ramel, to take care of the, the swearing in at this point in time. Uh, let's see. Timeout for just one second. Uh, we, we, our recording thing is, are we online?
Yeah.
We are, okay. The, the thing up there usually has some red lights up there and it's not on, so we just wondered if if it's, uh, if we're online like we're supposed to be, so. Okay. We'll let them work on that and go ahead, Spencer.
Please.
Aye. Aye. Joseph Haberly, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Idaho, the ordinances of the City of Rexburg, and the law enforcement code of, of ethics. I will endeavor to enforce these laws to the best of my abilities. And that I will faithfully discharge all of the duties assigned or requested of me in my capacity as a reserve law enforcement officer for the City of Rexburg.
All right. Thank you, Officer Haberly. Appreciate you. All right. Sorry? Next, Lim Horn. Come on up. Oh, my Siri is trying to record all this.
Aye. Aye. Hank Lim Horn, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, the ordinances of the City of Rexburg, and the law enforcement code of ethics. I will endeavor to enforce these laws to the best of my abilities. And I will faithfully discharge all the duties assigned or requested of me in, in my capacity as a law enforcement op, officer for the City of Rexburg.
Okay. Well, well, he's, I, sorry, I, I forgot to ask, but Officer Horn, can you just stay here for just a second? And Officer Haberly, Reserve Officer Haberly, could you come up for just a quick second and just take thirty seconds and just give us your little elevator speech on, on who you are and, and your experience and what brought you to this point?
Uh, I'm Joseph Haberly. I work for the fire department, um. The other guys in blue, I just wanted to, whatever you like them, so I went to some school and they helped me pass it. And I'd just like to, I'd just like to help out. I'm glad that I can.
Great, thank you very much.
My name is Lim Horn. I, uh, immigrated to the States from R six, uh, loved everything about America, and I, I enlisted, uh, when I was eighteen after high school, and I served twenty-one years in the army. And always been interested in law enforcement and, and, uh, I, I feel like this is the best way to serve, uh, to serve our community. So here I am and glad, uh, to be a part of the, the department and, uh, looking forward to learn from everybody there.
Thank you for your military service and your, oh, that's, they're okay. That's okay. All right, and, and for your continuing service in our police department. Okay, Riker Davison.
Aye, say your name.
Aye, Riker Davison. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United.
Aye, Riker Davison. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Idaho.
The ordinances of the City of Rexburg.
The ordinances of the City of Rexburg.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will endeavor to enforce these laws.
I will endeavor to enforce these laws.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties assigned or requested.
All of the duties assigned or requested.
Of me in my capacity as a law enforcement officer.
Of me in my capacity as a law enforcement officer.
For the City of Rexburg.
For the City of Rexburg.
All right. And after we get that signed, we'll ask Officer Davison to give us his elevator speech as well.
My name is Riker Davison. I grew up on a farm in Montana. Uh, we moved from there in high school, bounced around the states a little bit. Joined the army after my mission and, uh, did four years. I didn't do twenty like Lim. After my four years, uh, end up going to school here, married my wife here, plan to stay here and serve here. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you. All right. We look forward to working with all three of these gentlemen over the next many years and we appreciate all of you. Our, our men in blue. Uh, we appreciate all that you do to keep us safe and we appreciate all the interactions that you have with the community and all of the positive things that you do in our community. So thank you all very much. And thanks for being here tonight. All right. At this time, we'll move on to item number five, which is the public, the time for public comment. This is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you've got anything that you'd like to make us aware of, uh, we would ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what, uh, what you'd like to talk about for a few minutes. Is there anyone that would like to take advantage of this opportunity? Is there anyone online? All right, hearing none. We will move to item number six, which is a public hearing. This is for the right-of-way vacation at approximately, at approximately twelve thirty-three and twelve fifteen Stocks Avenue. So this is out in our business park out here north of town. We have a street that, uh, when that business park was developed, they decided to put a a, uh, kind of a a median down the middle of the street and it had some bushes. The main reason that I understand that someone told me about is that there was a really nice tree right there, uh, in the business park and they didn't want to take out that tree. So they kind of built this median around it and made it kind of nice. But since then, the tree has died. And, uh, and that that is not really necessary to be there anymore. Uh, it just kind of takes up space and the roads go around it. And so uh, there is a business that wants to locate right there and they need a little bit more space. So, uh, they have petitioned us to vacate that space so that they, okay, yeah, they're gonna show us on the map here what we're talking about. And that'll make it a little bit easier to visualize what we're doing. Out there on stationary road. So like if you're going into Art Co., yeah, so you, right there, yeah, you've got that little spot right in the middle of the road. And then the business that's coming in is going to be in that vacant lot right there. Yeah. And see how that jogs in. They actually need that space uh, for their building and parking lots and things like that to be able to fulfill our parking requirements that we have for the city. So basically this action is to just, what we call vacate that spot. And, and, uh, what's that? Oh. Okay, sorry. And, uh, and then be able to just uh, make it so that they can take the curb and sidewalk in a straight line there instead of having that jog in. Did I explain that? Okay? Okay. Do you have anything to add, add to that?
No, I think that, that covers it.
Okay.
It's not needed in there. Um, it is a little awkward. And so staff is comfortable with vacating that section.
Okay. Right. So we do need to have a public hearing in order to do this action. So when we do a public hearing, that is when we offer a time for anybody who has, who is either in favor of this or kind of neutral about it or opposed to this action. So at this time, I'm going to declare this public hearing open. And we would like to, if there's anyone here that would like to testify in favor of this action, please come to the podium and uh, tell us what you'd like us to to know about this particular action. And please state your name and an address, if you would, please.
Brian Haney. My address is one thirty-eight North, twenty-nine hundred East in New Dale. I drive down Stocks Avenue, uh, right there frequently and, uh, there's a light up to the left of that if you're not familiar with where you're looking. And the people that come in often turn to access the rest of the, the businesses down Stocks Avenue. And I'm in favor because I have seen multiple times uh, cars turn, myself having done it with a truck and trailer, you turn wide and you're in the wrong lane.
Oh.
Um, and it's also, there's another tree that I think maybe has been planted in the island that often can obstruct views from vehicles. So uh, I think it's a great idea. I'm not sure who came up with it. But I'm definitely in favor of fixing.
If it was a great idea, I'm sure I came up with it, right?
Probably was the mayor. So, yeah, I'm in favor. No opposition.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your testimony. All right. Is there anyone else?
My name is Blake Walker. I live at plus fifty-seven Stegelmire Lane here in Rexburg. Um, historically, I've driven past it a lot and it hasn't been very well maintained. Uh, going forward, if the city were to maintain it, that would incur additional costs that I don't think the city needs to bear the burden of. Additionally, um, I think it would be difficult to plow around. I don't plow the streets, but um, shout out to them and there at first, I, I don't think they need to be pushing snow around it. Uh, additionally, if, if there's no benefit to traffic, I could understand if it was a deceleration lane or anything, but I think it's more a hindrance to traffic than anything. If it was marking the entrance to the subdivision, I think it would make more sense if it were close to the road, but it's not. So if it was really just to mark and preserve a tree that's now dead, I, I don't, I don't see much point in, in saving or conserving it, especially when there's benefit to somebody that could, could use that property with the abandonment of the right-of-way. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
My name is Kevin Baxter, uh, five, four, five, South Second East, apartment five, ten, Rexburg, Idaho. Um, I deliver lumber for a living and anything that obstructs my path to your site, whether you are Mayor Merrill or Councilman Reese, is a hindrance and a nuisance. And therefore, when it becomes a hindrance and a nuisance to me in a large truck, becomes a safety hazard to everybody else. And anything that's in our road that's not road or snow, in my opinion, and I think I can say professionally, should be removed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ben Riedalch, three, zero, nine, one, North Salem Road in Rexburg. Um, I am in favor of that as well. We currently own property on the street just west on Bond Avenue. The, uh, agency I'm a member of has purchased the building on Stocks Avenue. That's all being remodeled currently. We're anticipating more traffic on that road. And the comments being made are very accurate, particularly the gentleman of Brian Haney. I often see people confused about where they're supposed to go, which side of that island. And we're anticipating a little more traffic on that road with the agency there. And I just think that it would be nice to avoid some possible problems. So I am in favor of it.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm Jared Ostermiller. My address is seventy-eight West, three thousand North in Rexburg. I own this property that's in consideration and, uh, am prepared to build a, a professional building on that for counseling services. I've had a counseling agency here in Rexburg since two thousand and two, so going on twenty-three years or twenty-three years and some months. Um, I've owned that property since two thousand and four. Actually, I owned the property just to the south of it, behind the building with the white roof. But, uh, in a property exchange, exchanged for the property at that proposed twelve thirty-three. And then because it was slightly larger than the twelve fifteen and the trade negotiated that portion that makes it just a little oblong. Uh, in preparation for building a building there, we just determined, yes, we could use some additional parking to meet the city's requirements. And with some city planners just brought up, hey, how is it that that island ended up in the street anyways? I hadn't heard about the big tree, but I actually think now that I can remember a big tree being in it at one time. There's three trees in there now. And, uh, they just, they occupy the length of it. To my knowledge, there's no other, uh, island like that in Rexburg unless it's much bigger and it's around about. And so I, I do think it's a little confusing myself. Uh, I'll park on either side of it sometimes just with consideration for the building, see traffic come and go. Uh, but I'm, I'm prepared to, uh, incur the costs associated with the corrections that would be required there. So I'd bear the cost for the removal of the island, the replacement of the curb, the removal of the asphalt in, in accordance with the building of the building there and just appreciate any consideration for that.
Oh, good. Well, that's good to know. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, is there anyone that'd like to testify in the neutral position of, on this action? All right. Seeing none, is there anyone that'd like to testify against this action? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, we will declare this public hearing closed. And at this time, I would uh, ask the council if they have any questions about this action. And if not, I would entertain a motion to move forward on ordinance number thirteen thirty-eight. Is there any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. I, I'm not exactly sure what it means to, I mean, vacating the right-of-way, who? Tell me, explain that to me.
Like what, the process?
Yeah. And, and what, who ends up with the property that we vacate?
So the adjacent property owner, uh, picks up that property that we vacate. So on, in this case, we're just vacating uh, the west side of stocks, just a small portion of it. And so it would fall to the property owner to the west.
Okay. And that, and in vacating any property, that's what happens? The adjoining property?
Yeah. If it's, if it's right, dedicated right-of-way, right, not purchased, then it's, if we we, uh, basically vacate it, it just goes to adjacent. So if it was centered and we're getting rid of the whole street, it would split and go to both property owners on either side of the street.
And is there typically no consideration for that to the city?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Not unless it was purchased in a deed, then it would be a different situation. But if it were to right-of-way, that was dedicated on the plat, then there isn't on that.
So is, is Stock Avenue, Stocks Avenue then just going to be the same width as it is to the south all the way up to, uh, stationary road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's how it would look. It would look just the same going straight all the way up.
Will there be a turning lane or anything like that? Or is that not necessary with?
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Yeah. And, uh, of course, as Mr. Ostermiller mentioned that, you know, he's, he's gaining some property there, but he's willing to cover the cost of the improvements that will, will happen there. So.
Required.
So that's a benefit, yeah. For both of us actually. So those win-win situations that we like. Any other comments or questions?
Sorry to comment. I just, uh, I agree with what's been said there. It seems like it makes better sense to go straight up and make that road look like a road instead of an island sitting down in the middle. So if there's no other questions, I'll make the motion.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'll make the motion to vacate this property on Stock Avenue and, uh, on ordinance number thirteen thirty-eight.
Okay, thirteen thirty-eight. And, uh, if this motion passes, we will consider that first read. Okay. Is there, uh, there's a, a motion has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion passes. We will go ahead and vacate that spot and move forward with it. All right. Item number seven on the agenda is committee reports. Uh, let's go ahead and start down here on the left with Councilmember Reese and, uh, report anything from our committees that, that might have happened that, uh, it would be good for the rest of us to know, if you would, please.
Yeah, well, we, uh, the Legacy Flight Museum hasn't, uh, met recently, so we don't have anything new there. Uh, of course, earlier today, we heard from the police in the open house and the, the plans for the new uh, police station and the bond, which will be on the ballot coming right up. So other than those two things, I, that pretty much covers, uh, my committees.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Um, Parks, or the Parks and Trails Committee has not met since we have met last. Um, I think we've got a uh, meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks. But, um, and so I really don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Council President Walker.
The Mayor's Youth Advisory Board met last week and split up into groups. They're gonna go around every year, they go around to the elementary schools on Halloween and give a little Halloween safety skip. So they practice those and they're gonna do that on Halloween, meet again next week. So if any of you high school kids want to join the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board, it's a great great organization and I'm just good on for public service on a resume when you apply for other colleges and stuff.
And you can join that anytime.
Then the applications are online, city at Rexburg.org. So. And the, and the ADA Overheads Committee Board has not met.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Um, like Councilmember Erickson said, the Trails and Parks Committee won't be meeting at the beginning of next month. Um, and then, um, the only thing I have to report is I've been helping coordinate a few, um, Eagle projects in the city. So they've been doing some improvements at, um, the golf course and some parks. And so we're really thankful um, for that service that they've done.
Do you know if, uh, the hydrant down in Nature Park, have they, have they done that already? Or are they still gonna?
I think they're doing it this weekend.
Doing it this weekend. Okay. That'd be awesome. That, that was a great, I, I appreciate them doing that. I think that's been something that's been needed to be done, but we haven't been able to get to it. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Erickson, Colin Erickson.
The Airport Board did not meet this last month. Uh, the School Board meets tomorrow night. Uh, there is a lot of things going on at school and I just encourage everybody to jump on their webpage and, and see the calendar. I mean, that, that they're very busy over there, but like I said, the School Board meeting is tomorrow night. The Golf Board did meet last, uh, last night, had a good meeting. They're finishing up the end of the season, closing things out, getting ready for winter to come on. We had a great season, again, bigger than ever. So, uh, facilities are being used. The, the good thing, the Legacy, they'll get on and finish the main water line there this before winter. So that's gonna be a great thing to get that finished up. So I said, you to get that done, probably by winter and then finish up it, rest of it in the spring. Like another thing that's happening out on the Legacy on October twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, if anybody's interested, is a Frisbee Golf Tournament. Then jump on the webpage and talk to a rec department. That might be fun for the citizens and other ones to be involved with, uh, beyond the Legacy. Um, there was some discussion with the residents on Teton Lakes on the north side and is determined to educate and kind of come up with a better plan out there trying to stop some of the problems that have happened with the neighbors there in that area. So other than that, that's my report.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Somebody open that door.
Oh. Yeah. Alan, would you take care of that? Yeah, we closed that a little earlier because there was a lot of racket out there, but, uh, it looks like they're all gone now. So, uh, we, we like to keep the doors open because this is an open meeting. So thank you for your committee reports. Let's move on to our staff reports. Uh, first one is our Public Works Report with Mr. Keith Davidson, our Public Works Director.
All right. Uh, thank you, man. Um, so the first item that we have on there, let me see, bring it up is. Um, so the first item that we have on there, let me see, bring it up is So the first item is we are um, we're working on kind of expansion of the Water Department Building and the remodel of it. And one of the things we were looking at in order to get the the distance we need in that new expansion uh would be a little bit of an encroachment into the dog park, and so I wanted to get councils, um, if the council had any concerns on that, um, I think we'd be encroaching in, so we're, the expansion's gonna come off of the west side of the Water Department Building and fill this area. We're looking at three bays uh for the Water Department to, to handle their backhoe. Right now, their backhoe goes into and they have to lower the back boom down, and it's, it's not a good situation. As well as having another place to put our vacuum truck, that's a lot taller um in this facility. And so with that, uh, we're looking at probably needing to encroach over to where this line is over into the dog park. So it's not a, a real big encroachment, uh, we'd look at changing up. Obviously, the fencing would just tie in to the side of the building, so then the building would be utilized as kind of a fence area in the dog park. So there's not a lar, a large impact, but I just want to make sure if council had any concerns uh with that.
Any comments or questions from anyone? Yes, Councilmember Johnson.
So it, it is really small, right? It looked like it was like a one person.
Yeah, it's not a large.
And do you see, uh, do you anticipate having any more need to take more of the dog park for any?
No.
Thing else?
No.
And one, one other thing probably to note is that end of the dog park, we, we tore it up at one time, gonna put a water feature through there and that didn't really work out that well, and it's kind of a mess right now anyway. So it might be good to, to do this and then, and then maybe while we're doing it, we can get in there and kind of clean up that end and make it look better, just get some grass in there and stuff, so that'll probably actually might help the dog park be better.
And that could be a service project too, if we needed it to be.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you, uh, let's move on to item number two.
So number two is, uh, we're looking at surplusing a twenty-fourteen Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred from the wastewater department. And so we're just seeking council's approval to surplus that.
Anyone have any questions on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion to surplus this particular item. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we surplus the twenty-fourteen Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred from the wastewater department.
All right, thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Reeser, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes, let's move on to item number three.
Okay, so the last item I have tonight for you is just approval of our fall cleanup dates. And so we're looking at going from October twentieth to November tenth for that. So that's generally when we do it each year, we always hope that the leaves all fall off the trees by then. So then that way, we can clean up those as we go around the community.
All right, and I've had a, had a couple of citizens asking me about this, so I know it's on their mind. So uh, if there are no questions or comments about it, I would entertain a motion to approve the fa, the fall cleanup dates.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve the fall cleanup dates from October twentieth to November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
November tenth?
Or November tenth.
All right, yes, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
All second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we make sure we get that on the November newsletter that goes out to the citizens?
The fall cleanup?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, generally, we do push it on those.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's there for the citizens.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it on there. In fact, that was one of the questions that a citizen asked me about tonight, as they said, well, we didn't see that on your latest newsletter. And I said, yeah, that's, because it's not on there yet.
Well, I've already seen citizens send them out on this curb, they've, they're already waiting for it.
Yeah, they're all over the place, so they're, I, I say they're excited about it.
They get answered.
Okay, all right, anything else, questions for Keith before he?
I do.
Yeah.
Not to keep you on hot seat, but uh, just report on the, our roads. Are they gonna make the twentieth, because it don't look like they're gonna make the twentieth.
Yeah, they are definitely behind schedule on first, they might make it on Park Street um, from what I was hearing. Um, and so I haven't heard a, a new date for what they've got going on First South and First West. So I don't have an update, other than the last one was the twentieth, but you're right, they are behind schedule on build, rebuilding that road back up, the sewer and the water all completed in there. Now they're just X-ing out and then rebuilding that section of road back up, but they are behind schedule with that.
I guess we can just talk to them, I, if, I don't know what we can do, but we are definitely hurting some businesses there.
Yep.
And try to, try to heat them on it, because like I say, First West seems like they kind of stopped for a little bit, so.
Yeah, no, I know they dropped down crews eight, because they had multiple crews in there, they had their pipeline crew in there. Now they, they just have their uh rebuild crew, but they've split them and they have a one over on Park Street going on there. But Park Street is looking a little more promising, there's not as much on that one. Um, so they, that one, they have a good shot at getting that one paved on the, the twentieth, but that's when their uh paving crew is gonna be back up in town.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and, and Keith, before you take off, let's uh, I would like to move item number nine, we'll just swap it a little bit here uh in front of the finance report, because it'll be fairly short, that's the mayor's report. But we wanted to talk in, in that time about the airport um liaison position that we're talking about. So can you bring us up to date a little bit of that? And I noticed Mr. Taylor is here too, so maybe we might pick on him a little bit to tell us a little bit about what, what he feels, uh, you know, the importance of this position is, to explain that to the council and uh, you know, and kind of where we're at on that.
Yeah, um, so obviously, as you guys know, the, the airport is a joint-owned airport between the county and the city. Um, and as, as you guys know, we're, we're looking at relocating the airport. It's been a, a long process getting to that point. Um, and as we've discussed the matter uh with Mr. Taylor, as well as with county, felt like it would be important to bring someone on board to really push that and work uh to move that project forward. Uh, working with the FAA, with landowners, uh, one of the biggest things that we're trying to find, uh, we have a, a willing landowners willing to sell, but they need the, they want to keep the grazing rights. Um, and so that's been a little hip up, so pushing that, that path forward um as well as looking for additional land that maybe we could purchase and swap with the BLM. Um, and so just having someone in that position where they could really kind of push that forward is what we're looking at. Um, hiring jointly, it'd be us and the county, and it would be a, a part-time position on that. And so we just contract that out.
Yeah, it'd be a contract uh employee. So I know that's a quick, down and dirty, but we have talked about this a little bit before, but I just wondered if there's any questions or comments about that from council. Basically, we, we just kind of wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at on that. Uh, the county actually approved it in their meeting on Tuesday. Uh, approved their portion, and basically we're working right now on uh kind of a job description, expectations, uh deliverables for the, for the job and then putting the contract together. And when we have that done, uh, we'll bring that to you just for contract approval, uh, hopefully in the next meeting.
So, so Mr. Mayor, who, where does that, where, where's the budget for that? Is it the Airport Board that's gonna pay for that?
Well, that, Matt, what, tell us a little bit about that with you.
Yeah, so we, it would come out of the Airport Construction Fund. And basically, that fund is built up in three ways. Um, generally, if you have a, if for projects, ninety percent of it comes from the FAA. But then the, whatever local match there is, we split that fifty-fifty from the city and the county. And so we are building that up, there is a reserve in there. And then every year, we look at the projects and budget what the need is. Okay, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And uh, Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to add to that, or would you like to come up and just stand for any questions or anything, or?
I usually say too much. If you can hear me from here, I'll just say it, but.
Well, we actually need you to come up if you could, because we're on the, uh, we're on the recording, yeah, and that makes it a lot easier for our deputy clerk to be able to hear things.
I attended that meeting with the county commissioners and explained the process to them, really breaking this down into three different segments. One is getting the approval phase done with the, with the regulating entities, the FAA and others. Landowners, BLM, Indian tribes, everything, it just, it gets a little complicated, working with the engineers. But as good as Keith is, he's not this good. He can't carry all the balls that you're asking him to carry and be the interface with this project and be expected to keep the momentum going forward. So this is why, and, and we've, we picked this up, I, this isn't our idea, we, we're copycatting. Rock Springs has done a, a, an incredible job uh of bringing someone in who understands the process and then engages and networks and then starts pulling together resources that we don't even know about yet. Uh, there's a lot of ways to get this uh project done and make it successful for the community. So there's, there's the, there's the approval phase, then there'll be the construction phase, and then there'll be the maintenance phase after the airport's transition to the new uh location. But uh, it really, it, I, from, from the Airport Board's perspective, uh, you know, we're, we're engaged, but we're not, we're not, we're just not there. I don't get up in the morning, this isn't on my agenda, this isn't, you know, something I'm cranking on every day. We need someone who's front and center and making it happen, has got the connections uh that we've got established, but they kind of go cold between sessions. And frankly, this has gone on way too long. And we're the number one priority in the state for the FAA to get this done. They're wanting it, uh, if we get this uh land deal settled, and we will uh sooner, through either negotiation or political uh means, we'll, we'll get this thing done. And then uh, the FAA is staged to have the funding ready. If, if we do our job, we could have a new airport within five to six years at the new location.
Okay.
And that's gonna require a lot of work in order to make it successful. We can't, uh, we can't just expect to flip the switch, move out there and everything's gonna be happy and hunky-dory. There's a lot of preparation that's gonna have to happen in order for uh the current assets to want to move out there and be ready. Most of the current pilots don't need a new airport, but the community does. And that's the purpose of doing this whole thing, and the FAA recognizes this. We've got some safety issues with the current location, and the FAA will only fund what the FAA will approve. Otherwise, we just lengthen the existing runway and on the land that we already own, but the FAA won't fund it. So here we are, we get an opportunity to make a clean uh sketch at this thing and, and uh, it'll, it'll service the community for the next hundred and fifty years. It will not be a scheduled airline airport, but it will be something that's appropriate for the type of aircraft that are coming now and want to come. And we get calls from people who want to come but can't, because their flight departments know that it's ninety degrees and you're on a forty-two hundred foot runway and it's, it's five thousand feet elevation nearly, and their insurance says thou shalt not. So we don't get those kind of uh customers to come, because it's just not doable. Any questions, I stand for you.
Any questions? Yes.
I have some questions, um, so when we see that contract, um, can we have a little bit more information about what like the long-term goal is? Because I hear, um, you know, I've heard some things, I, I, I'd like to know how big we're talking and how many employees and how it would be funded. Um, and more of a long-term um proposal for, for what exactly is um being looked at? Could the council have that when we have a contract too, so that we have more of a frame of reference for, for what's going on?
Yeah, so you, you mean like, uh, when you say how many employ, you mean like how many employees would be at the airport and things like that?
Well, yeah, because I've heard, you know, I, I've heard some things, I, I would just like to know what exactly the end goal is and what all the work is that would be entailed and who would be paying for it and how much would come from grants and how much would come from the city and the county, um, so that we have a better idea of what exactly we're talking about.
Yeah, in fact, that's really what, what this uh contract is, is it's kind of a scope of work, you know, what we expect them to do. Who's gonna, yeah, who's gonna pay for it, you know, how much the county's gonna pay, how much we're gonna pay, all those kind of things.
Yeah, and long-term too, I mean, like when we actually move it, um.
Okay.
Wouldn't, this would be, this would be year to year.
Question, because you, uh, communities like Rock Springs created not just an airport board, but an airport authority. And that's owned by the city of Rock Springs. Now, ours is owned by both county and the city, but you create an airport authority. But if we think we're gonna move to this new airport, which has a lot more capability and brings in a lot more traffic without increasing our commitment financially, we're kidding ourselves. We need to be prepared for that, because this is going to be in, in our best interest, but it's gonna be more expensive. Uh, no questions about it. Now, the, the cost of building this thing is borne by the FAA and, and the cost of, most of the cost of maintenance. But when you really put all the pieces together and you, and there's a gentleman out of Rock Springs that we interviewed, we went there and, and picked his brain for two or three hours. Uh, the things that they have done there are, it's just, it'll blow your mind what the possibilities are. And it doesn't have to be public money, it can be private, it's, there's grant money, there's state money, and if you know where to go to get it. Uh, yeah, but Keith and I don't wake up in the morning thinking about that. And so we need someone who will. And, and if we, if we do it right, uh, it'll be a great asset for our community. Any other question, Eric?
I, I'm assuming this would be a year-to-year contract with this individual.
Uh, ye, this.
And is there, is there someone designated, someone that you?
We've been, we've been visiting with a, a gentleman who is interested. We haven't pulled the trigger, we haven't made the commitments there. We'll see what his thinking is after the job description and the scope of work is put together. And it's only phase by phase, he may only, or she may only be good for the first phase. And then when you get into construction, we may need somebody who's got more construction background as, as in that position. And then when you go to maintenance, it, it, you know, and it's years down the road, five or six years down the road, it may be an entirely different individual altogether, and I think it should be, because it's a whole different uh.
But could we all, could we task this individual, at least initially for, for the first year, to give us the information, because I don't think we're gonna know, by the time we do a contract, I don't think we're gonna know all the details about the long-term plans of this airport. But that's, this individual maybe can help us in that first year, kind of get a plan for the, for the, for what, what we're thinking, right?
We did, I, I gave the mayor a, a list, and, and I think Keith got it, uh, that, uh, of, of some of the scope of work items that need to be included in this, I don't think it's inclusive, there's probably a lot that I didn't think of. But uh, when you see what I call it, the little hellhole in Wyoming, Rock Springs, is able to pull together, this, the, we, we're really, we really can do this right and have a lot more success than they, than they have. It's about getting the right FBO, who owns the fuel systems, who's gonna put up the pilot's lounge, who's gonna, who's gonna put up, you know, hangars? Uh, I'd like to see private money come in and, and, you know, be slated. But it's gotta be set forth in the, in the engineering and the design of it and done in a way that makes this work for the next hundred and fifty years, and there's gonna be a lot of growth. We have really sabotaged our current airport by being open with, with all of the owners. There, we've had, we probably, how many, how many hangars could we've had out there if this airport didn't have a plan to move? Probably, I imagine it could be another ten or fifteen hangars out there now that there's people who want to be here and want to use this facility and, and want to do business in the Upper Valley. And uh, believe me, we've taken a, we've taken a look at all the angles. And it's, uh, I think, I think we've settled with what makes the long, the most sense in the long term.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. Well, if it's good for a hundred and fifty years, that means some of these kids here might be sitting in these spots up here and making those decisions, right?
Well, it really, really, what, it, I think it's, the airport's one of the five legs of the community uh that keeps that stool steady, you know, internet, uh, infrastructure, roads and bridges and schools the airport, and there's probably one other one that I can't think of, but anyway, that, that's what it uh, it takes. Um, any other questions? I think the county budgeted about uh, between forty and fifty thousand is what they.
Yeah. I don't have a really question, I'm, being sitting on the Airport Board for the last four years, I fully agree with two, it's kind of like Groundhog Day sometimes there. I fully agree with to it's kind of like Groundhog Day sometimes there and because we talk about the same thing, it's not moving. And if we can get this thing moving and get the future plan out there, I think it's a good thing to finally get going and and do that. Because there's a lot of things they've had to do, a lot of studies that keeps coming up and. It just keeps coming up and keep coming up, and we get somebody to look into that and over it to move this, and if we can look at five years, that'd be awesome. In my opinion, so.
We we've said we need somebody that's bulldogging it, right?
He's done a great job. He has plenty on his plate. I mean, yeah, we just keep adding to his plate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate that, and we appreciate your service as our airport board chairman. That's. You've been been stalwart there for a lot of years, so thank you. Appreciate that. All right, we'll go ahead and move on with uh item number eight B, which is our finance report with uh our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen.
All right, I'm not going to take too long on this tonight. And so this report really is through. September, um, which is the end of our fiscal year. So as you look at the hundred percent there in the spent column. That can kind of give you an idea where each of those different funds are sitting. And just for your information, you know, there are still quite a few adjustments to be made on these numbers. As we close out the year and do our audit prep and all that. Um, in fact, you know, the bills that you'll be you'll be paying tonight, a lot of that will be accrued back to fiscal year twenty five. Even though we're in fiscal year twenty six now. So as I as I looked through it, a couple of things, just a couple of quick ones to point out. Like the general fund you can see was about ninety five percent spent. Um, that was mainly operational, right? Lots of lots of wages and so so that's good to see that one under budget. As you go through it, um, a couple that I just want to point out, a couple more, um. John and I were able to kind of look at Rexburg Rapids. We feel like most of the bills have came in on that. We believe that it will probably have an operating loss of around twenty thousand this year. Um, some of them, you'll see like the paramedic down on Fund Thirty Seven was at a hundred and forty seven percent. Well, that that has corresponding revenues that come in with it. And the golf course was kind of the same way. I will mention, because you guys have been talking about it, uh, Fund Forty Eight, the airport construction. Uh, is right there, so you can kind of look at that. We didn't spend a ton of money in there this year. And then Fund Forty Nine, the airport relocation reserve, that is really the savings for the match. That would happen when the construction of the airport actually does happen, and so we've been building that up, and that's at about one point one million. So overall, our our percentage spent is sitting at about sixty six percent, and then I anticipate that going up just a little bit as we close out the fiscal year. So any questions on that report?
No questions from anyone? No questions.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Matt, while you are up there, though, um. We have item number ten, which is the approval of the purchase and sale agreement for Sixty West Main Street. This is the uh. Old school district office building there on Main Street, so if you want to go ahead and. Tell us about that.
Yeah, and I'll pull this picture up so that the public can kind of see what's going on here. So we've been talking about this for a long time. So this this is uh, this purchase and sale agreement is part of two purchase and sale agreements. Um, so as you look at this picture here, this is the old junior high property. Um, I can't really think it's around five point seven acres, if I remember right, total. But the two bottom parcels, the idea here is is that urban renewal. And they actually signed the contract today and we'll give that to the school district and they meet tomorrow. They're going to purchase the the two parcels that are on the bottom, so where the school is and then the one acre in the middle. That would become public parking. And then the one that is to the the north, uh, that I think it says parcel one. Um, that is the one that we're talking about with this contract. And what it is, is the school, or sorry, the the city and the county would purchase. That acreage, it's approximately one and a half acres. Um, we would split that cost, and so it would be, it's a total of one point three million. For that parcel and the half of that would be the city, half of the county. And the county actually met on Tuesday. They actually already signed the contract. And so if you guys approve it, then we would sign it and we would give that contract to the school district. And then they, like I said, they meet Thursday. Um, couple of things to know is that uh. You know, once, once the everybody's signed, we would have a hundred thousand dollar earnest money, so city would have to come up with fifty thousand. That we would pay within five days, and then the intent would be to close. Both of those transactions on April thirtieth. And then the school district would would, they need to stay in the the building until June fifteenth. And so they would have to vacate the building June fifteenth. At which time, uh, the hope would be that urban renewal would be able to pay for the demolition of those those buildings. And then the idea would be that that parcel on Main Street, which is about three point two acres, would then. Be uh put out to be sold for private development. And then that private developer, you know, if they were to come in and they had a parking need. And were willing to help build a parking structure, we would allow them to build that parking structure. In that middle parcel where we would also put public parking. And so. So that was a lot. I just kind of gave you a a pretty quick summary, uh, but that is, that is, um. That's the details on it, and so we're just basically asking you to approve the contract and then the mayor would sign that.
Okay, and that's that's quite a bit, but we have been talking about this for a while. Is is there any questions? Or comments from anyone on this? Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So we're splitting the one point three million, so it's like six hundred and sixty thousand each, right? And then I couldn't see the contract. I saw the urban renewal contract. But then do we have a separate contract that I was missing in the packet for the city?
Oh, did she put the urban? Well, this is, this is the city one, right? I think it says city and county, buyer Madison County, city of Rexburg, so.
I couldn't see that in there. And was I looking in the wrong place? I saw the urban renewal one.
I don't know. I I just. I can shoot them out to you guys in an email. I can shoot both of them. Um, yeah, I can shoot them out, and you're right on the amount that is correct. We would split that.
Yeah, okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion at this time to move forward.
Oh, Mayor, let me add one more thing. So before we officially close on it, we would have a committee uh between the city and the county. And work on that one point five acres to have a separate agreement. And the reason for that is we're going to have to maintain that green space going forward, and we want to just ensure that. Um, that we understand how that would be split in the future. And so, so we'll be bringing that back to you as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to make one clarification, just because I've heard so many people talking about. This urban renewal will buy the parcel number two and number three.
Correct.
We are dividing parcel number one with the county and the city, which is one point three million.
Uh, yes.
And so we're looking about six hundred seventy five thousand come from the city. Because like I say, a lot of people have been talking like the city's buying all this. We're not. Urban renewal is buying two and three. We're buying the the front. The back.
Back piece.
Back part of it. I just want to make that clear, so it's not a confusion because we don't have eight million dollar. Bills or whatever it might be on this whole thing or six million or whatever it might be to do this. We have, we have six hundred seventy five thousand we're looking at.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you're right. And I and I'd probably add to the the beauty of that back parcel. Is as you look at it, it has bus lanes on both sides. And that is, that's a big reason why we believe that's a great place for the city and county. For future planning, because you, if we were to do something there, ten fifty kilometers down the road. We have on street parking for customers in those bus lanes.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, and urban renewal is paying for the whole dem demolition. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and did anyone read the contract? Did any of the council members see the contract between the city?
Feud it.
I didn't read it in detail. I I think she put both of them in here because I'm looking at the.
Yeah, I noticed there were two contracts. One was for uh. Like one point some odd million and the other one was for the balance. They got it up to seven point three or four.
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so I noticed there were two in there.
Okay, I think we could, Councilmember Walker said he couldn't get it to open either. I couldn't get it to open, so.
Okay, I I'll email him because I'm looking in the packet right here and they're both in there.
Okay, yeah, and the uh, I mean, the major details Matt has covered, the rest of the contract is all pretty much just uh. Standard real estate uh information, but. Okay, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to. Approve this purchase and sale agreement. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the purchase and sell agreement for Sixty West Main Street.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and sign that contract and get it to the school district for their meeting tomorrow. Okay, thank you, Matt. All right, item number eleven. Uh, we have no second readings uh or third readings. Now, what this is, just as a matter of expl- explanation. For students that are here. When we have a bill come up and we pass a bill or an ordinance, it has to go through what we call three readings. The first reading, we did like this one tonight, we passed that uh, that one and we considered it first read. Uh, ordinance number thirteen thirty eight, item number six. So that was the first reading. And then, um, in our next council meeting, it will, it will be have a second reading, so it gives the council a chance to. Maybe reconsider something if they feel like there was something that wasn't right, or they or they want to talk about something on an issue. And then in the meeting after that, it will go through the third reading. So each thing that we act on has three opportunities for the council members to. To uh consider things and uh sometimes they say government moves kind of slow and and it does. On purpose because we want to make sure that we are fully considering things before we make them permanent, right? So that's why you have three readings of these items on the calendar. But we have no second or third readings, so we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is items that require formal city council action. Uh, however, they are typically routine and not of great controversy. Um, council members may ask that any specific item can be removed from the consent calendar for a specific discussion in greater detail. Uh, and that would include the minutes from our October uh first, twenty twenty five meeting. And the approval, the approval of the payment of the city of Rexburg bills. Those are the things that are involved in the consent calendar tonight. So at this point in time, if there are no questions or comments about uh either one of these items. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mayor. Oh, I moved that we uh approve the minutes from October first meeting and that we approve the payment of the Rexburg bills.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Colin Erickson, seconds, and uh. Is there any further comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will enter the minutes in the record and get the bills paid. Uh, is there anything else that needs to come up before the council, just informationally or anything before we adjourn? Hearing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here. I hope you learned something. And I hope you get a good grade from Mr. Reeser. Or whoever else your teacher might be.